Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay Chiaqazi of Consular Court of Alodim Marsh Paradigm Anti Colorado. The acronym is EMPAC. We are a state provincial government within the Moroccan Empire, alright? So today, we want to continue talking about the same subject matter. And what is the subject matter? How did the Moors lose their land? And how did the Moors get the land back? So, what we learned from part 7, keep in mind today is part 8, part 8. What we learned in part 7 was understanding that the United States of America has been dissolved. We also learned that in 1871, that they created a new government called the United States, but as a municipal corporation of the District of Columbia. So it's a corporation, okay? So today, what we're going to learn is, what do the Moors need to know about getting their estate back? Their E-state back? How do we get it back? We get it back with a pin. It's that simple. But who has the pin? The matriarchs. The matriarchs must now start to understand that they need to now have what's called a birth of a nation. The matriarchs need to have a birth of a nation. And how is that done? With a pin. The Moors must start understanding the proper vernacular. It's called the state. If Moors are not using the vernacular of state as a part of their presentations and presentments as it relates to Consular Court, as it relates to government, then I hate to tell the Moors, but the reality is this. You're still a Moor subject because you're still a stateless people until you have a state. And the only way you can have a state, the mothers must create a birth of a nation. How do you do that? By now checking the boxes. The Moors must now proclaim their nationality. But guess what? There's more boxes, Moors. According to international law, you must now have your constitution. Moors must have their own constitution. Must have your seal and your provincial flag. What do I mean when I say provincial flag? Moors must understand that the Moorish Empire flag is the flag of the world. It represents all Moors around planet Earth. Planet Earth was inhabited by all the Moors. We are the original inhabitants of the planet. This flag represents all Moors on every continent around the world. So now you must understand, all Moors need to carve out their own state provincial flag that represents their latitude longitude. It represents their constitution. It represents their officers of said state. So therefore, Moors must start understanding what it means to create a state. That's the only way to get your land back. So we'll continuously talk about today, law and history. As it relates to what did the colonists do? These people call themselves the white people quote unquote. These people call themselves the American quote unquote, which is a nom de guerre. These people were truly sheeply British. What did they do? Through one of their acts of Congress, in order to hold on to the Moorish estate, in 1913, they created what's called the Federal Reserve Act of 1913. So we'll talk about that today. We'll point out the problem, but we'll also point out the solution. There's no use in Moors talking about problems and not pointing out solutions. So we'll talk about the solutions as we've already alluded to already, alright? So, what we'll do is talk about the Federal Reserve Act of 1913, alright? So, as Taj Sri Bay has taught us, you must study law and history. What happened in 1913? The colonies with a pin through their acts of Congress allowed the Federal Reserve to now take over the sovereignty of the United States of America's citizens. We'll talk about that today. However, we must also talk about how did all this take place? Why did all this take place, alright? So the first thing we're going to do is start reading this act. It's going to be the 63rd Congress Session 2, Chapter 5. So, what we'll learn as a reference point is what you call an act of Congress. So your House of Representatives in the year 1913 put together what's called the Federal Reserve Act. You can find that in the 63rd, 63rd Congress Session 2. It says Chapter 4 through 6, but we're going to read Chapter 5, okay? Alright, so we're going to go down, excuse me, we're going to read Chapter 6. Okay, so keep in mind, what is the purpose of reading this? We must always understand law and history because the parties must be known. The Moors are in a treaty with the United States of America, not the United States. But the United States of America has been dissolved. But yet they still pretend on an international platform, they'll have that United States of America placard, the United States of America placard right in front of them when they're sitting down in the international communities. But all the nations around the world know the United States of America is bankrupt and dissolved, is insolvent. But guess what else they know? They know the United States Corporation is bankrupt and dissolved. They know that as well. They know that the United States and the United States of America is nothing but a facade. It's nothing but the Wizard of Oz. And remember, the Wizard of Oz only had his power in the movie with Dorothy because all the people kept saying, "Go see The Oz." They finally went to Oz, Emerald City, and all the people running around dancing, the colored people. The colored people are dancing because they changed colors in The Wizard of Oz, the colored people. They all think that Oz is real. You must understand, the powers that be only have their power because the people allow them to continue to maintain that power. But the Moors must understand, the United States of America is a facade. That the United States is a facade. It's all a fiction. And the only way that they now lose their power, the people must point out the fraud and remove them from those seats. Because they're sitting in the seats, they belong to Moors, they're pretending to be Moors. They're pretending to be Oz. But in the movie of The Wizard, Oz in the end, the curtain's pulled back. The curtain's pulled back on the dogma. So, in The Wizard of Oz, the curtain gets pulled back on Oz. Who does it? The dog. He pulls back the dogma. It pulls back on that facade, that theatrics. It exposes the fraud, alright? So what happens with Oz? Oz, when he's first exposed, he looks back at Dorothy and he's still going rah rah into the microphone. Even though he's been exposed, he's still pretending that he still has the power. He's talking to the mic rah 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 rah. And he's looking at Dorothy and I'm like, "Oh crap, I've been caught." But still in that moment, he's still speaking in the microphone pretending as if he's still Oz. And that's exactly what's going on right now with the Moors. The Moors have pulled the curtain back on Oz and Oz is still acting like he's still in power. But guess what? At some point, Oz finally turns around and tells Dorothy, "Man, I was just, I've been faking it the whole time. I'm an alien in this land. I'm an immigrant in this land. I don't even belong in this land. I've been able to get away with power in my existence by pretending to be the sovereign. Pretending to be the executive. Pretending to be the president. Pretending to be the governor. Pretending to be the mayor. Pretending to be the police. And all this time, I was a fraud." Oz ended up being scared to death because he just didn't know what to do. He didn't know what to do. So therefore, in the end, what happens? Dorothy finally goes home. She finds out she was always home, she just bumped her head. And what happens to Oz in the end? Nobody talks about it. It just goes off because Dorothy goes home. So that's exactly what's happening with the Moors right now. The Moors are coming home. We're coming full circle. And we're going to deal with Oz. But how do we deal with Oz? First, we got to point out what Oz has done. And in order for us to correct it, that way we never repeat these mistakes again. The mothers must understand what has Oz, i.e. the United States of America, not to confuse the United States Corporation, alright? So let's learn more about that today. Today, we'll learn about the Federal Reserve Act of 1913. Now, before we get started, who came out in 1913 on the scene? Noobu Dua Ali.
Yeah.
Alright? So Noobu Dua Ali comes out on the scene, alright? He's starting to create havoc because now he's starting to set forth documentation to the United States of America to let them know that the Moors is making a claim. So therefore, Noobu Dua Ali is making a claim on the inside of Morocco. But guess who else was making the claim during that same time? France. France signed a treaty called the Treaty of FES, F-E-S, of the year 1912. And then France comes over to the United States of America and tells the United States of America, "You know the Moors you got subjugated? Yeah, we came to wake them up and give them protections in our French courts under Consular Court protections." So the Moors, Moor subjects are the responsibility of France. France being the protectorate and the Moors under codified word called the proteges have to understand that France, because of 1912, caused the United States to file bankruptcy in 1913. We'll talk about that today. So therefore, Noobu Dua Ali is on the scene, he's putting in work. Well, guess who's putting in work on an international level? France and the Sultan of Morocco, working together in unison to deal with these colonists who are gone rogue. So we'll talk about that today. I just wanted to give you a quick brief so the mothers can understand, alright? So now, let's look at the reference points. Because I never want to sit here and just tell you anything, reference points, okay? So first things first, we're going to read the Act of Congress of 1913, understanding that the chain of events took place because of what happened in 1912 with the Sultan in France. 1913, here comes Noobu Dua Ali. Here comes France, also putting on the record that the United States, y'all gotta give up the estate. That's the truth. So let's learn what the United States of America, not to confuse the United States did in 1913 through their acts of Congress in order to maintain their stronghold on the Moorish estate. Alright, let's read it, mothers, Chapter 6.
An act to provide for the establishment of Federal Reserve banks to furnish an elastic currency to afford means of discounting commercial paper to establish a more effective supervision of banking in the United States and for other purposes.
So immediately, what are we learning? They're creating elastic currency. What is elastic currency?
Plastic, fake money.
It's fake money, it's counterfeit, they're creating counterfeit. They're not using money anymore, gold and silver. Now they're transferring the estate over to paper, okay? That's their way of undermining the Moors because France just came over and said, "Give the Moors back their estate." That's including their gold and all their resources. So the United States is now trying to pull a fast one. Saying, "Okay, we got to give back everything to the Moors, let's start printing paper." And still hold on to the Moorish estate because the people don't know what's happening right here. The United States citizens didn't know all this was going on, but the administrators knew, alright? Go ahead, mother.
So is that when they sent all the gold to England?
Not just yet.
Oh, okay.
That happened in 1933.
Oh, okay.
We'll talk about that another day, but definitely as good as you're thinking about that, okay? Alright, let's get back to the reading.
Being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives of the United States of America and Congress assembled, that the short title of this act shall be the Federal Reserve Act.
Stop, now wait a minute. I thought they had filed bankruptcy and dissolved the United States of America in 1871. This is now 1913. We're talking 44 years later, they're still using the name, United States of America. Why? Because they have to keep the fraud going on as if they're the United States of America, even though in 1871, they created a brand new government called the United States Municipal Corporation of the District of Columbia. They're working out for two shell companies. That must be understood. The United States of America is bankrupt. Any checks they write on that name, a bounce. It's a closed account. The United States opened up a new account. Now you're going to find out, they closed that account in 1913 because the Federal Reserve now took over all those accounts. Continue to read, I'll make sense to you.
Whenever the word bank is used in this act,
Quote-unquote, bank?
Quote-unquote, is used in this act, the word shall be held to include state bank, banking association, and trust company, except where national banks or Federal Reserve banks are specifically referred to the terms quote-unquote, national bank and quote-unquote, national banking association. Used in this act shall be held to be synonymous and interchangeable. The term member, quote-unquote, member bank shall be held to mean by means any national bank, state bank, or bank, or trust company which has become a member of one of the reserve banks created by this act. The term quote-unquote, board shall be held to mean Federal Reserve Board. The term quote-unquote, district shall be held to mean Federal Reserve District. The term reserve, is that quote-unquote?
Yes.
Reserve Bank shall be held to mean Federal Reserve Bank.
Okay, so right now, what they're doing is now classifying things. They're now changing over from the United States Corporation over to the Federal Reserve Act. So they're creating another corporation. They're now crashing the United States. It's going to be bankrupt and insolvent. They're creating now a brand new corporation called the Federal Reserve Act, okay? Where now they're transferring the trust. Can you remember, the colonies they're living off the trust? What trust? The global trust off of the Moorish estate. So now they're transferring it to the Federal Reserve Bank, alright? So the Federal Reserve Act is nothing but a bank because all these are corporations. The bank is a corporation. The United States is a corporation. The United States of America was a corporation, a bunch of shell companies going on. So they close one, open another. Close that one, open another. That's all they keep doing is opening up shell companies as a pass-through because of the trust that they set up, a global trust. But in order to have a trust, you must have an E-state. So they're living off the Moors' E-state, alright? So you must understand in law, it's first the estate. You can't have a trust without an estate. So the estate is the land, the dominion, the Moroccan empire. That's number one. Number two, then they set up a trust. The trust is like a shell company. All of the riches and the wealth from the estate are passed through the trust. And the trust has managers. The trust has what you call, fofers. Trustees, the trust account.
The word you said.
Fofer.
Fofer?
Fofer, like foffer, F-E-O-F-F-E-R. Foffer. What does that mean? You're a manager over the trust, you're a trustee. You're an executor. You're an administrator. All of the colonists have a role as administrators to maintain the trust. And the trust is like a vampire living off the resources of the Moroccan empire. So once you have the estate, then you set up a trust and follow everything through the trust. And from the trust, they create contracts, private contracts, okay? Those are the three levels. You must, that must be understood. So what are they doing with the United States? The United States is now transferring that trust over to the Federal Reserve, an international bank. So they continuously like vampires in a leech, a tick, a parasite feeding off the Moorish empire. They don't want to let it go by any means necessary, alright? So let's continue the reading, Section 2, Federal Reserve Districts.
Federal Reserve Districts, Section 2. As soon as practicable, the Secretary of the Treasury, the Secretary of the Agriculture, and the Comptroller of the Currency acting as quote-unquote, the Reserve Bank Organization Committee shall designate not less than eight, nor more or less, no more than 12 cities to be known as Federal Reserve Cities. And shall divide the continental United States excluding Alaska into districts. Each district to contain only one of such Federal Reserve Cities, the determination of said organization. Committee shall not be subject to review except by the Federal Reserve Board when organized, provided that the district shall be apportioned with due regard to the convenience and customary course of business and shall not necessarily be coterminous with any state or states.
Stop.
What does that mean?
Coterminous means to share. So they're sharing power, they're sharing responsibility. The committee shall not be subject to review except for the Federal Reserve Board when organized, provided that the district shall be apportioned with due regard to the convenience and the customary course of business and shall not necessarily be shared, you see, with any state or states, alright? So that's what that word means, means to share, okay? So we'll start the word committee.
Committee shall not be subject to review except by the Federal Reserve Board when organized, provided that the districts shall be apportioned with due regard to the convenience and customary course of business and shall not necessarily be coterminous with any state or states. The districts thus created may be readjusted and new districts may, from time to time, be created by the Federal Reserve Board, not to exceed the 12 in all. Such districts shall be known as Federal Reserve Districts and may be designated by number. A majority of the Organization Committee shall constitute a forum with authority to act.
So stop right there, mother. So what's happening right here in Section 2? So the United States Congress is now passing the power, the sovereignty of the United States of America over to the Federal Reserve to now act as the governors, the comptrollers, the comptrollers meaning the financial controllers over the global trust of the Moors' estate. Because the United States colonists don't want to give up the estate. They're living off the estate. So therefore, they're holding on to the Moors' body and their incompetency of still being stuck in psychosis. The Moors are stuck in psychosis, think they're crayons. While the administrators now shutting down the United States Corporation because now it's crashed in less than 45, 44 years, from 1871 to 1913, it's crashed already. Now they're transferring it now over to the Federal Reserve as another corporation to hold on to the trust. And the only way you have a trust would be have the estate, okay? So now the Federal Reserve now is setting up districts over all the so-called states. They control the states, you must understand. What are we learning here? The Federal Reserve runs the show, not the presidents of the United States. That's why when you hear Trump was complaining, "I don't understand why I don't have supervision over the Federal Reserve." Remember, he was talking about that a little bit, but he wasn't allowed to really talk about it? It's because the United States is a corporation that's been dissolved. And now that power is over to the Federal Reserve. So therefore, any so-called president of the United States is just a puppet. It's just there for show to keep the so-called citizens of the United States from basically tearing up the whole quote-unquote, country because they find out that the Federal Reserve bankers own the United States. That the United States is really the Federal Reserve. That's true. And who owns the Federal Reserve? The Pope and Great Britain. And all the nations around the world feed off of that Federal Reserve trust. Think about it. What we must understand, before, as we continue to read, you must start to get the proper concept in your head. The United States of America has dissolved itself. Now the United States has dissolved itself and transferred the trust over to the Federal Reserve. That's what's happening right now, just trying to keep it simple, alright? Not too complex, okay? Alright, let's continue reading the next paragraph.
Said Organization Committee shall be authorized to employ counsel and expert aid to take testimony, to send for persons and papers, to administer oaths, and to make such investigation as may be deemed necessary by the said committee in determining the Reserve Districts and in designating the cities within such districts where such Federal Reserve banks shall be separately located.
Stop, so what's happening? They're going to perform investigations and start to deputize executors to oversee all 12 districts of North America. So they're appointing heads of state that are really bankers. All of them are bankers. You must understand that the banks control the world. Not your prime ministers, not your presidents, not even your sultans, and not even your monarchs. The bank controls everything. Everything. So don't get me wrong. The Pope and the Crown controls the Federal Reserve. But the Federal Reserve got access to documentation that the Pope and the British don't even have access to. Nobody knows more about your money than the bank. That's why if you look at what's going on currently in the year 2021, who are they going after right now out of Mr. T and his bookkeeper? Mr. T being Trump. They're going after his bookkeeper in order to get to Trump. Because the bookkeeper knows what all the money is and all the numbers, et cetera. So even though they might not be the so-called powerful person, but they still control the money because most times the rich, they don't know nothing about their accounts. It's the bookkeeper, the CPA, the financiers, the comptrollers know everything. That must be known. Which means, you ever heard the term, she who controls the checkbook controls the house? Federal Reserve controls everything, including their so-called boss. That's the truth. So let's continue.
The said committee shall supervise the organization in each of the cities designated of a Federal Reserve Bank, which shall include in its title the name of the city in which it is situated as quote-unquote, Federal Reserve Bank of Chicago.
Stop. So therefore, every major city out of the 12 districts, that city is really controlled by a bank, there is no governor. There's a banker that oversees everything along with a bishop. Every so-called State of the Union always has the Pope watching the money. Every state you go to has an archdiocese who's a bishop over each state. His job is to keep an eye on the Federal Reserve. Why they say church and state? So who's running everything? The Federal Reserve and the Pope is watching it, keeping an eye on the bankers. And the bankers are keeping an eye on the Pope. That's the truth.
Under regulations to be prescribed by the Organization Committee, every national banking association in the United States is hereby required and every eligible bank in the United States and every trust company within the District of Columbia is hereby authorized to signify in writing within 60 days after the passage of this act its acceptance of the terms and provisions hereof. When the Organization Committee shall have designated the cities in which Federal Reserve banks are to be organized and fix the geographical limits of the Federal Reserve Districts, every national banking association within that district shall be required within 30 days after notice from the Organization Committee to subscribe to the capital stock of such Federal Reserve Bank in a sum equal to six per centum of the paid-up capital stock in surplus of such bank.
Stop, so what's happening? The Congress is creating a new corporation called the Federal Reserve. And the Federal Reserve now is telling all the private banks, "Y'all have to come under one conglomerate. Buy into the stock. Transfer all of, transfer all of your assets over to the Federal Reserve." to the Federal Reserve and become a member of the stock market. Who's the stock? The people. The people are the stock. And what's, what's called a non-movable asset? The land. Because they're using the estate as well as the people as collateral as the stock. Alright? So right now, it's, they're forming all the banks together and telling the banks, you come under one franchisee. We're gonna control our colonists' status through the banks. And we slowly but surely have to get up off this gold because the Moors get to get their gold back. So we gotta push this paper, private commercial counterfeit paper on the people slowly but surely, so we need all the banks to be on the same page and not be talking about that gold so much. So let's create gold and silver certificates as well as this Federal Reserve paper and start getting the people to start getting off of the gold and silver. And that's why you'll find out in nineteen thirty-three, so from nineteen thirteen to nineteen thirty-three, they finally said, it's over with the gold, y'all just gonna get this paper. So you're winging the people off of the gold and silver through the nineteen thirteen Act, Federal Reserve Act, to bring in paper to start slowly but surely replacing the gold and silver. But they had to get all the banks to be a part of the conspiracy because the gold was going back to the Moors, and I'll prove that.
So they set up like, this like setting up their terms and conditions?
Yes. Alright? Let's continue.
One-sixth of the subscription to the payable on call of the organization committee are of the Federal Reserve Board, one-sixth within three months and one-sixth within six months thereafter. And the remainder of the subscription are any part thereof shall be subject to call when deemed necessary by the Federal Reserve Board, said payments to be in gold or gold certificates. The shareholders of every Federal Reserve shall be held individually responsible equally and ratably and not one for another for all contracts, debts, and engagements of such bank to the extent of the amount of their subscription to such stock at the par value thereof, in addition to the amount subscribed, whether such subscription have been paid up in whole or in part under the provisions of this act.
Stop. So you remember back in the day, if you found out somebody was a banker, you say, oh man, that person made a lot of money?
Yeah.
They were always invested into the stock market because they all were told, you invest in this and be a part of this fraud, because if you're not a part of the fraud, we're gonna put you out. So therefore, they were paying off all of the private bankers who became now part of the franchise, they became franchisees, stockholders. So therefore, that's why they always talking about the bankers had so-called a lot of money, your people in the stock market got a whole lot of money, because they're all complicit in the fraud. So they're paying them off to stay silent that way they don't tell the rest of the so-called stock, i.e. their sheepo, i.e. their chattel, that the game's been played on them, that there's only a handful of people have access to the wealth and the rest of y'all just getting crumbs. Go ahead, mother. So you go to, you go to Act of Congress eighteen seventy-one, you go down to section nine, as soon as they get through reading the oath, the next sentence says, "Any member who shall refuse to take the oath herein prescribed to forfeit his office, and every person who shall be convicted of having sworn falsely to or violating his said oath shall forfeit his office and be disqualified thereafter from holding any office of profit or trust." You must understand, when they run for office, they're not running for office so they can help with legislation, they want access to the trust so they can get rich. Their salary's around what, a hundred, hundred grand, a hundred fifty thousand?
Of a modest.
They spend twenty, thirty, fifty, sixty, and ninety million so they can get a job making a hundred fifty K? Nah, because they got access to the profits and the trust, the bonuses that they receive. That's why by the time they finish their careers, they're multimillionaires. How you become a multimillionaire on a hundred and fifty thousand a year plus taxes? But these people ain't figured it out yet, they keep voting for them.
And all of this is off of our estate?
That's correct. Let's continue, so we can try to get back on point. Alright. So, but it's good for you to at least see that the Act of eighteen seventy-one talks about the profit and the trust. They're talking about that once again right here, the trust, the bank is nothing but a trust, it's a shell company off of the estate. Okay? Let's continue.
Any national bank failing to signify its acceptance of the terms of this act within the sixty days afore said shall cease to act as a reserve agent upon thirty days of notice, to be given within the discretion of the said organization committee or of the Federal Reserve Board, should any national banking association in the United States now organized fail within one year after the passage of this act, to become a member bank or fail to comply with any of the provisions of this act applicable thereto all of the rights, privileges, and franchises of such association granted to it under the National Bank Act.
Stop. So right then and there, they're admitting there is what? All rights, privileges, and franchises. It's a corporation setting up franchisees called the twelve districts. It's just a corporation, everything's a shell company, there is no country, that must be understood, it's nothing but corporations controlling the Moors estate. There is no United States of America country, there is no United States country. It's one hundred percent a corporation claiming a false extraterritorial jurisdiction over the Moors estates, i.e. Oz pretending to be the ruler until the Moors pull that curtain back on them. That's what's happening right now. So in the meantime, until the Moors make a claim, how do we make the claim? First, we must have what? A state. You cannot make claims based upon a dispute until you have a state, because guess what? The United States of America, not to be confused with the United States, both parties have been acting as outlaws. What do I mean? The United States of America is no longer a state. The Moors don't have a state. Neither party has a state. Don't get me wrong, Eritrea has a state. We will start to enforce our sovereign rights through the Moroccan Empire. The United States has a de facto state. What does that mean? They're Oz. I mean, it's a fact that they're a state. What makes them a state? Because the people keep saying they're a state. So by their own tacit acquiescence or by their own consent, they continue to say the United States is still a country, because the people are the government. Listen, government is not the buildings. Government is the people, and the people keep saying they have a United States of America country. So therefore, the administrators say, the people say it's a state, it must be a state. What's the problem? The Moors haven't been officially ratifying states to make a challenge to this de facto state, we must be a de jour state, and right now, Moors don't have a state. And they leave the Oz here to keep pretending as if he's controlling the east state, because he don't have a state. He has a corporation controlling the east state as trustees, not as a country. So what's the remedy? The Moors must create a state under Article twenty-two of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, seventeen eighty-six and eighteen thirty-six. Article twenty-two says that you can make a claim through your will and it shall not be interrupted because the consul will validate that will. And who's the consul? Your own counsel of your own people that speak. If the United States de facto corporation has a problem with that, you take it to the Hague. What's the Hague? The United Nations. Let them deal with the dispute as a referee. The only reason why the Moors, they got their land back since Noval Drar Lee came on the scene in nineteen thirteen is because we've been undermined by our own. Go ahead, mother.
So I have a question, I mean, with every place across Morocco has been colonized, so the leaders of the United Nations, aren't they a part of this as well?
Yes. So you must understand, as it relates to just cogits in international law, other nations are not allowed to get involved with civil disputes. The United Nations obligation is only when a nation versus a nation puts a dispute on the record. When these two nations got a problem, they need a referee to come in to deal with it. The United States ain't asking for the UN to come in and deal with Moors. So the Moors gotta ask the United Nations to come in and deal with the United States. But the Moors haven't created a state. So until they create a state, they can't go to the United Nations. So the United Nations can't get involved with civil affairs until one of the nations puts it on the record that they're having a dispute.
But what I'm stating though, with us having a state and taking it to the United Nations, what makes it think that the United Nations are going to be on the Moors side when they are also a part of the problem?
That's a really good question. How can I answer it? Because of their charter, they have obligations according to international law. That's number one. Number two, you must understand that the United Nations knows that the United States of America, not to be confused with the United States or the Federal Reserve, they know the United States is controlling everybody else's empire, everybody else's state is being controlled by the United Nations because of their war machine, their war powers. So the other nations is sick and tired of the United States. They're the ones who continuously come out with rights of indigenous people, they come out, what's called the SERD, which is Convention on Eliminating Racial Discrimination. The United Nations came out, what's called the fifteen fourteen Declaration of nineteen sixty, decolonizing all colonized lands. The United Nations came out with Rights of the Child, the United Nations came out with Human Rights, the United Nations have come out with the Vienna Convention, the United Nations have been trying to help, but guess what? They can't do nothing until the Moors recognize themselves and become competent in understanding international law to create a state. And then once we go and make that dispute on the record with the Hague, then the Hague can get involved as a referee and deal with the Moors dispute against this Wizard of Oz, who's it named? So now we're understanding that the United States, not to be confused, the United States of America now have dissolved the United States in the year nineteen thirteen, created the Federal Reserve. However, you must understand, they're keeping the United States as a shell company, as a pass-through. What does that mean? They come up with all different types of ways to save the United States. They say it in all caps, uppercase U, lowercase United States, they'll say U dot S dot, all types of shell companies, so the people keep thinking the United States is real. So what's happening is the Federal Reserve will pass so-called monies through the United States, and the United States will now pass money to its citizens. It's all of Assad. It's all of Assad. Supposedly those monies are going to the Congress, and then the Congress writes a bill and says, let's give everybody a stimulus check. Congress ain't giving them nothing, you know why? The Treasury of the United States, not to be confused, the United States of America, shut down in the year nineteen twenty-one. There is no Treasury of the United States, because the United States is not a government no more, it's a corporation. And they transferred the so-called Treasury over to the Federal Reserve in nineteen twenty-one. So-called, you never even hear the United States even talk about Fort Knox no more. Ain't no more gold. They don't need a Treasury. As a matter of fact, the so-called Treasury Department, the head of Treasury doesn't even receive a salary every year. They don't even get paid from the so-called government, you know how they get paid? Because they're stockholders. They get compensation, but they don't get a check. You know, they say the president makes four hundred thousand a year. What's the Treasury got here? Zero. Why don't they tell you that? Because then they have to confess to you that there's no Treasury. Okay, so let's, let's think about long history. What's going on? Why are they acting so erratic right now? Which you must understand, during his time, Woodrow Wilson, who was the president at that time, he got some bad news from France. Woodrow Wilson now goes on what's called Jekyll Island, Jekyll Island off of the coast of Georgia, Little Island, right off the Georgia coast, right in the Atlantic Ocean, Little Island. So Woodrow Wilson, the president of the United States, gets with all the bankers. They put together the bill that was now sent over to Washington DC District of Columbia, and they enact this right here. So guess who had to be down with all this? The entire Congress, which is your House of Representatives, your senators, your executive branch, which is the president, all the bankers and all the judges and all of the barristers were down with this. Well, why were they down? Because they had already done it in eighteen seventy-one. They all been benefiting from all this fraud. So they're like, keep it going, so they can maintain their status of holding on to the estate. So you have to go back and do your history and understand Woodrow Wilson, what he did on Jekyll Island nineteen thirteen. Why did he do that? Because now you're gonna learn now, because France had already told them, you gotta give up the seats in the estate. In nineteen twelve, the Sultan signs a treaty with France, March thirtieth nineteen twelve, we went over this. You go down to Article six, watch this, Article six, Article six. What does Article six say? Watch this. Go ahead and read it, mother.
Article six, "The diplomatic and consular agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protection of Moroccan subjects and interests abroad."
Stop. Moroccan subjects. Who are the Moroccan subjects? The Moors. Abroad? Wait a minute. Supposedly they stand in Morocco, over there in North Africa. So what are you talking about abroad? France is standing in the Kingdom of Morocco in Africa, so why they talking about abroad? Because abroad means the Maghrib Al-Aqsa, the most extreme west part of the Moroccan Empire, which is commonly known as North America. So right here, the Sultan Morocco is giving France permission to go and be the protector for the Moors over what's commonly known as North America. Continue reading, mother.
His Majesty the Sultan pledges himself not to conclude any act of an international nature without the previous approval of the French Republic.
So is an international nature gonna be happening? What's happening? France gonna roll up on the United States and tell them, yeah, you know all those Moors you got, that you call Negro, black, and colored, African-American, Negroes, every color under the book, every nominee gear that makes them aliens and subjects? Yeah, we're here to protect them. Why was France doing that? Because they know that the United States of America colonists are living off the Moors estate and that the colonists were back in cahoots with the British. Even though the colonists fought the British, they slowly but surely got back into friendly relations. And anybody who's an ally of British is an enemy to France. So you must understand, France is coming over to tell the United States, I'm gonna undermine your entire trust. The trust you set up to live off these Moors, it's over, I'm about to pull the rug from underneath y'all, your game is over. The forty acres and the mule is going back to the Moors. I'm gonna finish where Lincoln started. So this is nineteen twelve when this treaty is signed with the Moroccan, with the Sultan. Now watch this. After they sign it, what do they come up with? A Moroccan-French flag. It's called a protectorate. It's called the insignia, merchant insignia, when France and Morocco came together in nineteen twelve. France closed one with the United States in nineteen thirteen, and the French Protectorate. Listen, Morocco, French Protectorate and Morocco relinquishing of the extraterritorial jurisdiction Morocco, French Protectorate in Morocco relinquishing of the extraterritorial jurisdiction by certain foreign powers. Who's a certain foreign power, the United States. Attitude of the United States, what's happening? France comes over in January eighth nineteen thirteen. January eighth nineteen thirteen. When did the Federal Reserve Act go into place? December of nineteen thirteen. So in the year nineteen thirteen, what's happening? Noble Drali comes on the scene. France comes over after they sign the treaty in nineteen twelve, they come on the United States in nineteen thirteen. So you got Noble Drali on the inside fighting, you got France on the outside working in, Noble Drali fighting from the inside out. France working from the outside in, they flanking the United States. So the United States panics. Moves all their assets over to the Federal Reserve to keep the Moors from getting access to their own estate. Now we've gone over this right here before, the protectorate of Moors by France, that's just a quick brief on that. We won't go back this right here to protectorate right now, go back and look at other videos for the French protectorate, you'll see it. So what happens? Why didn't the Moors, if Noble Drali is fighting so hard in nineteen thirteen, France comes over in nineteen thirteen, tells the United States, it's over? Well, what happened? Why didn't France finish what they started? You know what happened? World War One started in nineteen fourteen. France got caught up in the war, they didn't have time to deal with helping the Moors no more. The United States got caught up in the war as well, of World War One. Everybody got distracted with wars, because wars help who? Banks. Because everybody gotta now spend money on the industrial nation of making ammunition. So therefore, France is busy, the United States is busy, Moors are still sleeping. So what I want to do is just take you through a quick understanding that in eighteen eighty, going back a little bit, in eighteen eighty, the Treaty of Madrid. You understand, now in eighteen seventy-one, Act of Congress, the United States tries to steal the estate from the Moors by creating a new government so they can undermine the treaties, they're breaching the treaties by creating a new government, seventeen, excuse me, in eighteen seventy-one. So France comes to the rescue in eighteen eighty, nine years later, creates the Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, mother, can you read Article fifteen?
Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco.
Continue.
Foreign national, naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restraint, restriction.
So what we learn in Article fifteen assumes a Negro, Black, or Color, realizing he a Moor, he can come back into his nationality and come back into his Moroccan government. But guess what? There's no Moroccan government in Northwest Mexico. So the Moors have to create their own state so they can come back into that said government. So therefore, it's talking about Morocco subjects, right? Wait a minute. Article six. The diplomatic and consular agents of France shall be charged with the representation and protection of Moroccan subjects. So you gotta understand, France the whole time been trying to look out for the Moors. The United States been trying to find ways to get from underneath that obligation. So what do Moors need to do? What do we learn from this today? What we learn is the United States of America is perfectly aware that this is Morocco, that's number one. They're perfectly aware that this isn't a country, they know it's a corporation, because they keep creating corporations. And they know that the Moors don't have a state. And they know the Moors cannot make a claim in any dispute in the United Nations to get protections until they have a state. So what do Moors need to do now? First thing first, the matriarchs. Not your sons, because your sons are out here running rogue with their feathers on. They doing whatever they can to put brakes on this thing, but they're not following international instructions. And the international instructions, as we learned in video number seven, we read the Treaty of Vienna, the Vienna Convention, Articles one, two, three, seven. You want full powers, you need a state. So the matriarchs might have to pull their rogue Moors back in so they can create things of substance. You must trade substance for substance. Moors want something, then we gotta give something of substance. And what is that? That's the state. The United Nations, we want something from the United Nations of substance, then we gotta give them something of substance. The United Nations gives us something back of substance, which is protection. But Moors must give them something, what is that? That's the state. And the only way to have a state, the Moors have to stop being self-appointed. I'm, that's not a negative. That's not a condemnation of anybody who's out here trying to fix this thing. I applaud anybody that's out here working hard on behalf of the Moors. But we must understand, we have to study international law, we have to understand what went wrong and what we have to do to fix it. Only way to fix it, we gotta check these boxes. If you don't check these boxes, you have no state. And until you have a state, Moors are stateless people, i.e. Moorish subjects. They are not Moorish nationals until they have their own nation that's called a state. So here's the deal. Moors say, you must proclaim your nationality. But guess what? There's more boxes, Moors.